Haven't done that in a while. It's been fun. Good afternoon and welcome to this Agenda Review Meeting of the NACISD Independent School District Board of Trustees. Let the record show a forum of board members is present and that the notice of this meeting has been lately posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. A board member, Jane Turpin, is not with us at this time. He might join us later in the meeting. This meeting can also be viewed through Zoom and instructions on how to join the meeting are available on our website, This is a wonderful time to say it is so wonderful to be back into a public meeting. We are calling this a hybrid meeting because you can join us in person or via Zoom. Since this is our first hybrid format meeting, I would ask that you be patient with us as we navigate any potential technology issues as this is the first time we've held a meeting in this format. I would like to remind everyone that the items on today's agenda are for discussion only and no action will take place at this meeting. I would also ask you to please silence yourself. We did not receive any requests to address the board as outlined in the meeting notice for public comments today. If you'd like to address the board for public comment at a future meeting, please follow the instructions on the meeting notice to sign up. That's going to take us into item three, our Agenda Review of the Consent Agenda. The first item is board meeting minutes. Did anyone have any comments, corrections, or concerns on the minutes? Hearing none, we'll move to item 3B, Business Office Reports. This is Barbara. It's wonderful to see you in person today.
Good to see you.
Good to meet you. The floor is yours.
Good afternoon, President Fitch, Board Member, Dr. Trillo. I'm just testing to see if can you hear me clearly. Okay, all right. I would like to begin with our Budget Amendments and you can find them beginning on page 21. The first Budget Amendment. The first amendment is Budget A, Budget Funds Received for Athletic Playoff Games and Associated Expenses. This represents several months. That's why it's quite large, $35,854 revenue and the associated expenses. Item number B, New Funds to Pay for Extra Duty for Police Officers to Work Graduation Activities. That is moving funds from section 11 at 36 into section 52, which is. Item C, End of Year Transfers to Cover Any Potential Shortfalls in Budget. This is, these will be our final Budget Amendments for the year. This is just a preemptive strike to hopefully avoid any shortages in our budget at the end of the year. And Budget, item D, Increase Budget for Medicare on behalf of Revenue and Expenses. Again, this is, yeah, but this is white trash on behalf, it is revenues equal expenditures and that I created the budget at the beginning of the year and I had one over and how we ended it ended up being much larger, so I'm increasing that. I'm increasing this in anticipation of it being larger again this year. Item E, Budget Donations Received. We had donations totaling $1,554 and the associated expense. Do you have any questions on the Budget Amendments? All right, I'd like to move on to We received, we earned $2,554 in interest and we have some transfers in and out depending on cash needs for the district. Any questions on the investments? All right, I'll move on to donations under $2,500 on page 29. On page 30, you'll find the detail.
Ms. Barbara.
Yes.
I look on page 30, I do, it said gift donation under $2,500. I see a lot of athletes get a booster club. Is that a booster club, is it general booster club or independent teams booster club?
Independent teams.
Okay, so when we ordered, I would rather to see it not only being for the others because general booster club donates money for scholarships, collect money for scholarships, I'm not mistaken. However, independent, the money they solicit, they collect at two different venues, they spend it on their own, each school.
Yes.
For example, if the soccer spend money, it comes from soccer booster club. It comes from volleyball, volleyball booster club. In other words, it would be defined by individual schools, if that makes sense.
Yes, so where it says Dragon Athletic Booster Club, in this instance, you should assume and we'll fix it for the future. When it says tennis, it came from the tennis.
That is correct because those people who contribute money for scholarships, sometimes they think they're money for the district. Thank you.
Any questions on the donations? Any more questions? All right, I will entertain any other questions on any other business office items that you may have.
Was that during the bond stuff?
Pardon?
Are we down to the bond stuff yet?
You can ask me questions on the bonds.
Well, I have a question.
Okay.
I just wanted to say that I noticed on page nine of the bond, what we were working on and I noticed that we purchased some trees from SFA and I think this is a really good thing that we're utilizing the local university because of their expertise and I'm certain that that's helping to look at our DSC. We're going to need some stuff in the future, so I really thank whoever made that decision. I did a really good job and I wanted to support that.
Any additional questions or comments? Thank you, Ms. Barbara, for your report today. That's going to take us to consent agenda item C, Purchases Over $25,000. Our first item is Instructure. Dr. Hill.
Good afternoon, President Fitch, Board Member, Superintendent Trillo. Good afternoon. If you'll know, on page 100 is the Action Sheet for Instructure. Instructure is also known as Canvas and that was our student management system, one of two, that we used in the gosh, I have to stop and think of what school year we were in because I've crossed over to the 2122, so the 2021 school year. I apologize for that, so this will be year two. And so in front of you, you have, or in your board book, you have one quote that's about seven pages long. The particular item that we're looking at is on page two of seven where it says year two at the very top of $35,581 and 35 cents. I've also this morning laid, or this afternoon laid, an additional quote that has a kind of a teal bluish tab. That's in addition and let me explain why there's two. The first one that was downloaded into your board book has 5,047 students and as they reviewed our usage for the year, we increased beyond that to 5,800. And so the additional quote is for 752 additional licentiousers for a total of $10,603.20. So by Thursday evening, you will see this additional quote being uploaded into your board book as well as an updated action sheet. So instead of your action sheet saying the $35,581, it will read $46,184.55. And this particular expenditure is from, I believe it was from federal funds and I will correct that as well. It says local funds at the bottom, but that will be corrected as well.
Now, we went with this particular vendor in the search site platform, that teacher request. Can you give us some feedback, are teachers still feel good about it?
They feel good about it now as we all know because everyone was learning just in time. We needed additional professional development. So myself, working with Ms. Morris, as well as the two digital learning specialists, have some more face-to-face professional development upcoming that will probably take place. And I say probably because we've got a couple of different things going on. We've got the series of days that the teachers are back on contract beginning August the 4th. Some of those are designated as campus days and/or district development days, professional development days. But we also have a back-to-school conference and so we are still, and we know this, it's better that they hear teachers here from other teachers, especially those who have experienced success. And so sometimes with our back-to-school conference, we're trying to entice them to present for us. So yes, we're keeping our fingers crossed that they will agree to do that for us during the back-to-school conference. But then we'll also have Samantha and Tandy, who are digital learning specialists, present in the back-to-school conference, but then also during those couple of weeks that were back in August. Does that make sense?
It does.
Okay, because we know everybody was learning at the same time.
Yes.
And that's never how anybody wants to roll anything out. And so we did work with some core teachers throughout this school year through our resilient school support program with DEA and we found it just to be most invaluable to, of course, hear from them and then also for them to teach their peers.
President Fitch, man, I had, this is one of those things that if, because of COVID, we were able to streamline, if you remember, about 18 months ago, unfortunately, NACISD was getting pretty pretty directly with regards to a hostage situation with our platforms, with our internet. And a number of teachers kept their information at the high school on Google. Others kept it on their, on the drive. And what we're doing with this platform is streamlining. These are one of the great things that came out and we're going to continue to look forward with is because if we have a student that has to miss school for whatever reason, the teacher's instruction will be housed here. They'll continue to archive and we'll be able to share that out. And even though we won't be doing the virtual thing, if we needed to, a student can use their device, teachers can push up data that way. Dr. Hill alluded to the fact that we are going to be actively seeking out teachers as well. Some of the practitioners of how to use the program is not any of us. It's the actual teachers that are navigating it. So the experts will be there and we're going to be utilizing those folks to come in and train amongst themselves and get strategies that will happen. Real pleased with the work that we've done with Canvas. Once again, Canvas is only from, if you'll remind the board.
Crease 3 through 12.
3 through 12. And so we use a different platform for the elementary and.
CSO.
CSO, yeah. So with that as well, it's making sure that we can meet the needs of the kids. This is critically important because in about three years, we will move into online assessments. So the more we can interact with using an interface of some sort, it doesn't become alien to our students as we move into the direction of online assessments. So this is something that's extremely exciting with regards to our staff and our students using both of these platforms, CSO and Canvas.
Dr. Hill, I was just going to ask you, I was, I was very excited when I read the email from Paula asking teachers to sign up for this. Do you know, have we gotten a few teachers who are going to address wonderful? Also, I was wondering, are teachers able to access their subscription or account or whatever you call it during the summer so that they can be working on their, I was like, excellent.
I believe so, I'm looking for Ms. Morris just for confirmation. I know on this new contract, there was the date that it won't start until July the 20th, but I believe it will run through them. So they do, yes, no, she's given me the affirmative. Thank you, that's a great question.
Dr. Hill, I have a question.
I guess.
On the page, one of the quotes, there's a thing, there's a, it says Canvas Custom Training. Could you elaborate on what that is? The Canvas Custom Training, they're about to get their six thing down. Three, six, it's six thing from the very top, it's on page 1.
That's actually for year one, Dr. Roman. So that's already occurred, that's for the year one quote. This is a three-year, yes, sir, it's already done.
So that's the, that's the initiation of trying to get everybody up to school.
Yes, sir.
And now we're adding, we're both.
Yes, sir. And I apologize, it is, it is a multi-page document, so it is very, a little confusing a little bit. It took me some time, so our page is on two of seven in the very top.
So yours, where it says yours.
Yes, ma'am.
I have one more question, I know, and I haven't, I haven't had any feedback in recent months, but I would say back at the beginning of the year when everybody was trying to learn it is, is, what, how stressful. You're absolutely right, but not an ideal situation, but my teachers absolutely rose the occasion. But I do remember some feedback that it wasn't necessarily syncing well with the gradebook and it was supposed to and we were, I know, had gotten some my team folks involved. Have we adjusted and got all those issues fixed?
We're here soon, if you don't mind stepping up and could you speak to that?
Yeah.
We'll have our tech person.
Yes, so that's something we are still working on. It is, it's been a back-and-forth battle, I could show you all my emails back and forth. It's a eSchool and Canvas issue. And I will let you know, I have reached out to KDISB, anybody that has Canvas and gradebook and nobody has been able to successfully do this, even at these big districts, but I have not stopped. Right now, the latest email was they need, eSchool and Canvas are now going to get an email or get a Zoom together so that they can figure out why it's still not syncing, but I have not stopped and it's, I don't want y'all to think it's on our end that we have not stopped. It's, we're trying to figure this out and I, hopefully, these other districts that I've reached out to, they're like, as soon as you figure that out, will you let us know? Because we've been trying ourselves, so hopefully I'm taking one for the whole entire, anybody using Canvas and eSchool. So I'm really hoping, I mean, I can't make any promises because it's kind of out of my hands, but I'm hoping by next school year that that button, we've got the button in there and we just need it just now. So, but we're pushing for it and we're not going to stop until we can get it.
I appreciate your diligence and rest of parents.
President Fitch, a lot of it, so we'll navigate and know the rationale behind it. We're dealing with proprietary information. Businesses come together, they basically feel like they own, they have a relationship with the school district. So they don't own the information the school district owns it, but they have proprietary ownership in what they offer. So when you, when you look at these canisters of vendors that are out there, they're not used to interacting with each other and sharing their data what they are used to as districts sharing their data now. But what we're trying to do is, in the customer side of it, making sure that our customers and customers can share their data, that relationship is strengthening. We had superintendent conferences last week. That was the question that I posed to the group, is the support that we have for regards to Canvas. Commissioner of Education, they backed up Schooling. And statewide, they worked with Schooling, they worked with Softso. But for some of us that listened to our teachers and decided to go with Canvas, we are navigating that and I applaud what Pearson is doing, reaching out to districts that are putting pressure because the data is ours, but in the industries like Canvas and these others, they've got, they're, they're starting to get along and we're putting in the same sandbox and we're learning how to play with each other to share data and be able to make the product that much better. So it'll be a little bit of a growing pain, but I'm fairly certain we've got some big players in the sandbox with this, so.
I'm hopeful, it seems like from a business standpoint, business development standpoint, Canvas would see the value and if they can get this issue fixed, it will be a lot easier to sell that product to the school district. Any other questions regarding the side of? Hearing none, we'll move to the next item. That's a tongue twister. I'm going to say Heineman.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, Madam President. Oh, yes, we're looking at Heineman, it's on page 108 is the action sheet. This too had a last-minute add-in, so at your places, you have a landscape document with a red tab. So this will be in addition to the very large quote that's in your board book. And so on Thursday night, you will have an updated action sheet with this addition. So the total for this expenditure is $419,046.38. This came about, we have been using pieces of these resources across the district that are elementary campuses and they've been using their federal funds. With the increase and the addition of S R 3, this allowed us to buy everything for everyone, if that makes sense. These are not consumable resources, these are teacher resources. And so as you all know, reading is paramount in the success of any student. And with our COVID slide, that is one of the areas where we're seeing some shortcomings. And so by us purchasing all of these resources, they are aligned with one another. It keeps our teachers from hunting and spending time trying to find a good interactive realow or which big book goes with this particular lesson or I'm doing this in my guided reading, which we've already done an investment in a couple of years ago. So we'd already started that. This will save us some time. Again, all of our elementary campuses will be aligned as far as all the resources. So when we have students who move from one elementary to another, they'll have some of the same language, if that makes sense, even from some of our resources and then some of our processes and procedures during our small group, whether it's the guided reading group or what is interactive writing, what does it mean to do shared reading? So we've been working with our curriculum APs and making sure that we have all of the components that we need as we go forward. And again, with the S R funds, with the addition of the S R funds, we thought it was very nice, a good addition. I believe 20% of our S R 3 monies need to be spent on increasing our instruction related to COVID. And so we thought this would be a good idea to go ahead and invest in this. The other thing is with Fontes and Benel, they are, they are reading teachers at their core, but there's a new assessment system called Benchmark Assessment System. In the past, we've been using something called D R A 2, which is the developmental reading assessment. And we've been using that for several years. We're at a time in our lives where they're no longer supporting D R A 2, so we're going to have to abandon it and we can either make a choice to go to D R A 3, which would be purchasing new assessment kits and training, or could we go with the Benchmark Assessment Kit that's aligned to everything that we have, does that make sense? So it just made perfect sense to all of us that we would go ahead and just do this clean sweep, go with Fontes and Benel and then adopt the Benchmark Assessment System. And so probably next month, because you guys approved the grade level equivalent reading levels that's in our board policy, so what we have in our grading guidelines, so you'll see that forthcoming. We wanted to make sure that this was going to be okay before we brought that second piece to you for adoption. So I'll pause there and see if you have any questions about this particular item.
I was just wondering, if we, if we do approve this, we better approve this. How soon will they ship it to us? And will it be available to any teachers who would like to grab what they need at pit time?
Our hope is, is that once this is approved in June, then as soon as we are allowed to enter in requisitions in July 1 with our new fiscal year, typically Fontes and Benel, or Heineman, excuse me, the company of Heineman, are pretty quick to get it turned back to us. I think the longest time that it will take is the unpacking and making sure that we get everything appropriately barcoded and then shipped out to the schools, if that makes sense. When we did our guided reading, it was just pallets and pallets of things. And so we spent a couple of days over at the warehouse, unpackaging and putting barcodes on everything, putting them in Ziploc bags so that they would be readily available for the teacher pickup, excuse me, or checkout. And then we street grabbing them and getting them to the appropriate campuses. So that would be the only thing that I could say, but it is our intent for us to go ahead and head this off that we would have it for sure in the teacher's hands by August the 4th at the absolute latest. Yes, ma'am. And then we will work with the curriculum APs this summer. I think we have a couple of days at the end of this month where we're going to come together and put all the pieces together so that in a scope and sequence, so that it makes sense to them, so that literally they could say, if this is, if this is what we're doing on this week, then I need, you know, A, B, and C resource on page X, Y, and Z. As far as training goes, because there is some training components, Heineman or Fontes and Benel are still a system that are doing some virtual training. So there are several of us that are signed up to do the virtual sessions as well as some curriculum APs and principals. It's our goal to then turn it, you know, turn it around to them so that they can see face-to-face. We did a PD survey, it's very curious, we did a PD survey and, it's earlier this year. And what we found was, as we thought, teachers feel most comfortable seeking PD and learning opportunities from their curriculum APs and their principals. And so that's wonderful for us. We've just got to make sure that we equip them with tools so that they can then help their teachers plan on a day-in, day-out basis. This also aligns with the reading academies that are coming from HB3 and/or the Texas Education Agency. So going into this next school year, the 2122 school year, we have our principals, curriculum APs, and discipline APs all participating. And that's for upcoming grade three are participating in the reading academies. So we'll begin to see some correlations there as well.
President Fitch, I mean, and board, we should spoke about the training and the efficiency is what is tremendous with regards to staff training and support. Right now, because of the fact that this is a tremendous expense that would not have otherwise, I can't say it would never have happened, but would not have otherwise occurred if they didn't have the ability of S R funds to target the needs of our students. But with that being said, what's tremendous with this is that we have a limited amount of folks that can provide support. And when we are all over the board with different things that are being used to meet the needs of our students, it could very well do it, but we are not working efficiently in maintaining that expert level. And this allows us to create some expert level individuals, not just at the district level, but at the campus level so they can support each other and they can have common dialogue. If one campus is using one thing and another campus is doing another, they're masters in what they're using, but they can't share the knowledge of whatever, in this case, where they can't find something else. But now you may have an expert teacher that's doing something over at one of our elementary schools and they're able to share some of the things they're doing with another campus that is going in the same direction and the practical point. We can build some efficiency, but more than anything, the advocacy of making sure that we have fidelity. Fidelity in what we're meeting instructional order kits and streamlining would not have ever happened if that's what would have been forced to do that. This is a tremendous expense to put there, but that's a priority where maybe we need to meet the needs of our kids. So I didn't want that, the training is a, is a big component, but it's a huge, it's what you don't see above, it's the iceberg, it's that bottom side of the iceberg that we want to make sure we can provide support for our teachers.
Yes, and can I make another comment?
Yes, ma'am.
I don't know if you remember, but I, when B Q J was wanting this and I was a little, you know, hesitant. And it was because we always, we had stuff and we never learned it all, okay? And so B Q J really wanted this and they have tried it now for a good semester. And June 1st, when we had the teacher work day, I had privileges getting on some campuses and I got to be teaching. And Mr. D called me and said, here, I got to show you this stuff. And of course, he is, he needs to now have an extra job selling for them because he is so solemn. But he took me into classrooms where teachers were and they share the success that they had. And here's the key, it is the training and it is across the board, but you kind of alluded to one of our problems at the beginning and that is, and probably because of the cost, we have always had a habit of, I like this over here and I like this over here and this is really good and I'm very comfortable with that. And really, every program has it all, but we have never, and I don't know why, gotten. But we have never, and I don't know why, gotten everything from one program and the benefit of that. And because we can afford this, this is just going to be tremendous. And I'm speaking to any teachers out there that are already breaking out in highs because they don't want change, which one of us does. But really, if they just give it a moment and learn this new thing, they're going to love it because of the fact that they can talk across campuses. And if they get transferred, then it's not a whole new world. And then the program really, it supports itself on every level so that you don't have all of this and you've got to come up with the test because our testing program is different. This is a really good idea, and I'm so pleased that we have the money to be able to do it.
I want to kind of come in on the end of those comments and reiterate it from a little different perspective. And I thank you for that perspective, coming from a classroom. For me, I am so excited about this because I think for years now, I've seen this as a witness in our district, that every campus is doing a little something different. And we're not, as this sounds like something Dr. Trillo would tell me, we're not experts in any one bit, we're know a little bit about law. And I full-heartedly believe this has been a long time in coming. And I understand the obstacles before people, the curriculum office or the superintendent's office have been reluctant because of the cost. So I am so thankful that we've got these special funds where you guys feel comfortable doing this. But I would also say that this is too important for us to let something like that prevent us from taking that step and implementing district-wide platforms like this so that our teachers can become experts and one campus can benefit from another campus and mentor each other. Very excited. And I'm going to also go back and share, and this board will remember when we interviewed Dr. Trillo, one of the things that he talked about was implementing programs with fidelity. And that's been a weakness for us. And so again, I'm very excited about this opportunity. And then that's going to be your next challenge, and the thing I throw out to you guys is implement this with fidelity. Let's really do this. If we can show success with this, then those big expenditures in other areas and other subjects will be a lot easier because we will have a success story behind us. Thank you for entertaining.
One more thing, because I cannot tell you how many, well, every year, flavor of the year. And not just that, but we spend money on programs and then never do it the way the program says to do it. Like all of a sudden, we think we know better. And so I want to back up that fidelity, let's buy into this big time. We're putting a lot of money into it, and I think it will be very successful.
Any other comments?
We invest in fruit, and the fruit comes through our children, through our teachers. It all works for the common good of our students and this community.
All right, any additional questions or comments before we move to our next time? Thank you, guys. I'm going to take us to item C three, Benchmark Education Company, Dr. Bill.
Madam President, thank you again. Benchmark Education is a company that offers Spanish resources in addition to English. So much like we did in our guided reading a couple of years ago, we needed to purchase Spanish resources for our native Spanish speakers, as well as our bilingual programs, of course. So this would be the sister materials to support our bilingual classrooms.
Do we have a campus that achieves this already?
I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I will find the answer.
Well, where did you come up with this thing? I'm sure you've got a good reason to share it.
Sure we do. When there, and I, sounds awful, but it's the man that is the Fuentes and Vanell representative. He often hears, you know, that we're a bilingual, and so he knows that we can't purchase one thing for just one group of kids. We have to purchase something that's going to be complimentary. So he always, and him being a former bilingual teacher, knows what good instruction should look like and knows quality resources. And so that's how we come up with this to this man.
Good, thank you.
But I can get you.
I just really want to know the source.
Yes, that's good. Yes, ma'am.
And I want to make sure, Madam President, and the Board understands, when we're looking at this investment, we're not looking at a whole completely different way for our students to speak another language. We want to make sure that we provide the teachers with the same kind of support and the same kind of language and the same language that they're using in one program, they can use it in this one as well. And we're notorious for a lot of times taking something, and we take something completely different, and we provide it, and we say that that's going to teach it to the fidelity. And I'm going to tell you, our goal for the bilingual kids is to transition them. And so when we transition them, we've got to do a real good job making sure that we are telling the instruction. There's nothing worse than transitioning a student out and then they have to learn a whole new system of how the instructions is being delivered in a whole different way. And so, and I'm speaking that straight from, I didn't, I didn't, I was a person that I was a person. I was a one language speaking child. And there's nothing more frustrating when you leave that language and you go into something new. It's kind of learning the whole new world. So this is why I'm on the team and making sure that we provide something that complements and works alongside so it doesn't frustrate our teachers because they're collaborating with each other. And they're also working on the development and the training that they have, so.
There's one more thing that goes along with this is our new demographics and rezoning. That's going to, because kids are going to be moving from school to school. And if they start at here and then go there, it's all seamless. So that's another part of the school with way, it gets complex, doesn't it?
Any additional questions on this? That will take us to item C four, Ingenuity, Dr. Bill.
Madam President, thank you very much. This is for Ingenuity, this is a program that we've been using at our existing former Malcolm Rector Technical High School for credit recovery as well as initial credit. We also use it at the high school. So this particular action sheet is for a total of seventy thousand eight hundred sixty-seven. And you'll see the two different breakdowns of licensures. We have seventy at Malcolm Rector, I believe, and forty licensures at Negatosis High School. So this is, I think since I've been here for the three years, we've exhausted our third year of the agreement. And so now we're beginning year one again.
And we're maximizing our license usage from both of those campuses?
We are, yes, ma'am. This company is really good. They will monitor our usage, but it's kind of a wash at the end of the year unless we just go excessively above, much like we did on infrastructure, but pretty much keep us the same. And the beauty of this particular program is that multiple kids, of course, seventy kids can be logged on at the same time. But it's not like Lisa has a licensure and I have a licensure and we have to like keep to that. All of us could be working on it at the same time. It's really great. And they are using it in summer school as well this year. So we are.
I may add, this is a testament to what we talk about. If we see something that's working, then, and our teachers have become very fluid in their delivery. There's no reason to change just because it isn't flavor out there. This is something we've had a commitment with, the kids know it, teachers know it. And we're, we've had it for three years, the contractors run out. Trust me, coming in new, I can say, hey, let's prove something different. We don't need to do that, we don't need to frustrate the kids, we don't need to frustrate the teachers. There's absolutely nothing that has not allowed us to do what we need to do for our students. And so this is why our recommendation is to extend this and move forward. This is a testament that if it's working, then this administration will make a committed effort to recommend that to the board. If it's not working, then we're not going to bring it to you. This is an example, one of those things that are working for our kids, and it's meeting the needs. And that's why we're coming with the extending this out of an additional three years.
Any questions or comments on this?
I'd like to make a comment about all that we've done, all of this material stuff. Report cards came out today, can be picked up. And so I know there's been a lot of anxiety about, well, this is a rough year for teachers and families and all of that. And I just would like to make this statement for anyone who is tuning in and listening, families especially, because I know from my daughter, the concern that whether or not their child was learning this year and then the extra anxiety that teachers had to deal with, with so many changes in COVID and virtual learning and Canvas and all of this. But let me just say, I know what teachers are doing right now, and they are not, they're not on vacation. And nothing would make my husband leave a room quicker than for someone to approach me and go, oh, you're a teacher. Well, you get two weeks off at Christmas, you get Easter off, you get spring break, and you get summer off. And I would get red in the face and he would leave the room. The only thing is, teachers aren't talking in right now, but they are, I can assure you, they are evaluating this last year, and they are seeing what worked and what didn't work, and they're making notes. They may not have all this new material to work with yet, but they're making notes so they know exactly where to go and where to see what this new program and these new materials can help them with. I mean, just really assure you, they are not forgetting, and they're having sleep science. I know they are.
I may add, if you'll allow me to, what's exciting is exactly that same point. We graduated, we had a tremendous graduation. We celebrated at S F A. But I'm going to tell you, these teachers, from that moment they graduate to across the stage, we had other seniors that needed to finish, and they were very close. And I'm excited with the fact that we do, and we'll have additional kids that will graduate. They're not going to be at S F A because I came and went. But they will have met and delegated requirements before the end of the summer and would meet the graduation requirements, and that did not happen in the silence. That happened because teachers came and will meet the needs of our kids that day after. And right now, if you were traveling up and down near the high school, you're going to see a number of kids sitting there, and you're going to see a number of kids sitting at the campuses of elementary schools. And I'm going to tell you, these teachers, if they're out there, they're superstars because we ended school and they came back that next week because they love the kids. And like we found out, campus is still live, our teachers are in there, they're polishing, they're evaluating, they're off at trainings, was it Region Seven, there's several there that are going to trainings. So they're all over the place refining and finding tuning their graph, so great point.
And we had very good enrollment for summer school differently. And you know that it's teachers and A P's and counselors contacting families and saying, you know, we recommend this before we put our ticket in.
All right, that will take us to item three D, Submission of Attendance Waivers to Texas Education Agency, Mr. Martin.
Thank you, President Fitch, members of the board, Dr. Trillo. This afternoon, the administration is asking for the board's consideration of approval for two waivers to the Texas Education Agency as a result of a missed at campuses. The first waiver can be found on page one twenty-six under forty. Due to heavy rainstorm on May the seventh, twenty twenty-one, Michael Middle School flooded the building and classrooms and had to be closed subsequently for cleaning and other reasons. So we are asking the board to go, the administration submit a waiver for May the seventh for McMichael Middle School as well on May the tenth, twenty twenty-one, due to another rainstorm. We have a power outage at the transportation center, as well as Negatosis High School on that particular morning, that caused us not to be able to open campuses around our transportation buses safely. I'll be happy to entertain any questions that will be ahead.
All right, here it is. We'll move to item four D, Consideration of Rescheduling to July Agenda Review and Regular Board Meeting. Dr. Trillo.
Well, the July calendar presents some challenges for us. And we want to make sure that we do our due diligence with the community and our folks out there. Due to the summer hours, we are also closed on Fridays. And so what we are proposing at home, by the way, Monday, July the fifth, is also a holiday with regards to what's like, it kind of compacts everything down. And for fairness of my staff and the quality of presentation and preparedness that we have, not only for the board, but also for the community to hear, we're working to prepare an agenda review and a board meeting, administration requests them to be moved, each of these meetings. The board rescheduling to July twenty twenty-one Agenda Review meeting to Monday, July nineteenth at noon, and the July twenty twenty-one regular board meeting to Thursday, July twenty-second at five P M. That would be the recommendations from the administration.
Will that work for everybody, those dates? All right. Hopefully, soon, soon. That will take us to item four, Agenda Review of the Discussion Action Agenda. Item A is Consideration of the Twenty Twenty, Twenty Twenty-One Compensation Plan, Mr. Wicker.
Thank you, President Fitch, board members, and Dr. Trillo. This afternoon, I have the pleasure in bringing you to the Twenty Twenty, Twenty-One, Twenty-Two Compensation Plan for the board to consider approval. This compensation plan was presented on June third at the Board Budget Workshop. And so I'll be happy to entertain any questions that the board may have.
Mr. Wicker, I may ask one question. I started to ask it at the workshop and none on one thirty-five in the board book. It is page four of the Compensation Plan where it provides us the staff breakdown.
Yes, ma'am.
I was surprised to see the reduction in the number of counselors drop from twenty to seventeen. Especially when we've talked a lot about social emotional needs.
Yes, ma'am. So that was just a error. One time we pulled the staff charge or staff information, we used that from multiple different sites that we have, E finance as well as on data suite. And so I believe the Twenty Twenty-One school year information that was previous was pulling in information that included maybe L V Cs or additional information. But we do have seventeen counselors, school counselors, and all the other professional staff is where those L V Cs and other administrative professional roles would fit.
Okay. So I believe what you're saying is that we had seventeen school counselors last year.
Yes, ma'am.
We're going to have seventeen.
That is correct, yes, ma'am.
And President Fitch, actually, there may be more. Because with S R, we're recommending and we're also entertaining committee is meeting and looking at it with the S E L, Social Emotional Learning. We're looking at some of our counselors have administrative responsibilities. We are looking at, are we meeting the social emotional needs of our kids? That would also include the possibility, and not the guarantee, but the possibility of submitting for additional social workers. I know we have social workers in there, but there's a need for that, possibly even individually, I think the needs of our staff for that. So even though we do have the number that's there, do not be surprised if you say, well, I thought we had seventeen, and we wind up with more. What we're looking at through the committee and the submission we have with T E A for the S R funds is that we may expand out to provide some more social emotional support for our, definitely our students. But we cannot neglect our teachers and our professional staff as well. So you may see additional, one of those, quick question.
Well, thank you.
Well, thank you. And, and that's kind of what I would, I would, I hope.
Yes.
Additional resources in that area, yes.
Yes, and in fact, just quite, I, I think the, we say the counselors have so many administrative responsibility. They didn't have the time they needed to help the kids. So a social worker space that because of the social, that massed you used to do all this stuff that I'm, I'm excited about that. It's a baby.
Any additional questions regarding the compensation plan? Would anybody be opposed to moving this to the consent agenda for our meeting on Thursday? Thank you. That will take us to uh item four B, consideration uh of adoption of the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one budget. Ms. Barbara.
Um, I'll be presenting um the budget. It will also be appearing on the screen here as well as you should have a copy of that.
Can I be asked or uh? Yeah, what I was about to ask is in the screen share for us, you were just saying, Mr. Martin. You got it. Thank you, Mrs. Barbara.
Okay. So this is the twenty-one, twenty-two proposed budget and proposed tax rate for uh this next, this coming school year. We have many budget requirements, many deadlines we have to meet. The deadline we're meeting at this time is adopting the budget, which has to be done by June thirtieth. In August, we will be um or actually in September, we will be adopting the tax rate. So the assumptions we used in, in uh preparing this budget is a refined ADA of fifty, five thousand three hundred and ninety-nine students. An M and O tax rate of one point oh five four seven, which is no change from this year. A debt service tax rate of point two four five, which is no change. Certified property values will not be available until July of twenty twenty-one. And the tax rate will not be calculated by T E A until after the certified property values are released. And staffing is an, is based on an enrollment of six thousand and four. One thing I do want to bring up, in the past, this is our second year doing uh our tax of property values a different way. In the past, we lagged. So we used, we used an old property value that was basically two years old. Last year, they changed that to where now we're using current year. So in the old amendment, if you had a lot of fluctuations in your property values, then you could potentially have um, if you had an increase in property taxes, then you wouldn't benefit from that until the following year. Now it's um, they are trying to do it where you benefit in that year. Unfortunately though, you're building a budget on a, a low number. We are not in a, we do not fluctuate in large amounts here at our district. So we're pretty comfortable and pretty projecting what we think it will be. Uh, we have staff raises um. Teacher beginning salary will go from forty-two thousand five hundred to forty-three thousand five hundred. Counselors beginning salary raised by two point eight six percent. All other beginning salaries were increased by one point five percent. When I say beginning salaries, that means people who come, who are hired. So that if you have existing staff that were at the lowest level, they are not, they are, they stay a half a percent ahead of a brand new staff member. Majority of our staff received a two percent flat increase. Auxiliary staff on pay rates one and two received a five percent increase. And teachers on steps two, three, thirty-four through forty-two received increases of more than two percent, but less than three percent. So again, we are uh recommending a tax rate of one point oh five four seven. Uh, we have revenues, projected revenues of fifty-seven thousand nine hundred and fifty-five hundred and eighty-four dollars. This is a decrease over the prior year of a little over one point eight million dollars. Our general fund expenditures. Again, we've had, I've mentioned in the budget workshop that we had a strange year, so it's hard to compare. But um, we, we've had large reductions in student counts and um, we have to uh, we've had to decrease the amount of teachers, but we are then turning around and breathing back through S R funds. So that three million dollar decrease in instruction will be picked up through S R funds. So here is um our final expenditure number here of fifty-seven thousand, fifty-seven million nine hundred and fifty-five hundred and eighty-four dollars, which matches our revenue for a balanced budget. Our beginning fund balance is estimated at thirty-one, two eight four, five eight eight, and same amount for the ending fund balance. And here's a summary of what was just presented. So in our board policy, we uh are required to have three months of operating expenditures in our budget, in our fund balance. So one month of operating expenditures is four point eight million, times three is fourteen million. And as you see, we're projecting thirty-one million for our fund balance. So we are well within our policy. So some highlights I wanted to bring about is due to major loss in ADA, the budget was built conservatively. Seventy-nine percent of our general fund budget is in salaries and benefits, uh, from seventy-two percent currently. S R funds are being utilized to hire other teaching staff. And the M and O tax rate used to build the budget is not necessarily what will be adopted, but we expect it to be. So spending by object, the majority of our, our funds are spent on instruction, I mean on payroll, excuse me, on payroll. And the payroll breakdown, the majority of our payroll is on instruction. The student nutrition proposed budget, we are proposing a um, a balanced budget again with revenues of five point two million dollars, an increase of three hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. Expenses projected to be at five point two million, which matches our revenue for a balanced budget and an ending fund balance of one point three million dollars. There's the summary there. And our debt service proposed budget, a tax rate of point two four five, which is no increase. We have total revenues, expected revenues of five million three hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. Expenditures of six million nine hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars for a deficit in spending of one point five million. This is because we are using fund balance to pay down our debt. This also is how we are keeping our tax rate at the same level. We still have a healthy ending fund balance of three point seven million dollars. And I will take any questions you may have.
Anyone have any questions? I think you've guided us through the budget workshops so very well that uh all of our questions have been answered up to this point. And thank you so much for all your hard work. That is a, it's a big budget to build and we appreciate the toil that you put into it. What do you guys say? We do have the option, we could move the budget to consent agenda or even on our regular agenda. I'm kind of torn on that. It is a significant action item for us and stuff. How do you guys feel?
We've had four hearings and we have today's presentation. This will be three opportunities on detail. We have asked a lot of questions. Personally, I won't hate it when we get to consent.
All right. Item four C is the consideration of a contract for collection of liquid and overall taxes. Dr. Higgin.
President Fitch and board, the contract between NACO, G S I S C and Charles Zansky Bradshaw L L P for the collection of liquid taxes set to expire. And I think it has sent uh the thirty-day termination letter to be effective June thirtieth of twenty twenty-one. Uh, the following act was placed in the date of Sentinel and uh letters stating the same were sent to local NACO attorneys. Let me say that again, so it's clear. Uh, the same was sent out to local uh NACO attorneys in firms here in Texas that specialize in the collection of liquid taxes uh for school districts. The actual uh statement that was put out there uh was NACO district, school district is accepting submission of attorneys interested in the collection of local liquid property taxes. Interested parties should send a resume, a letter of interest uh to the attention of school superintendent Dr. Gabriel Trino, forty-six thirty-two Northeast Colony, Bryan, NACO, Texas, seven five nine six five, or via email at the administration at N A C I S D at dot org by two P M on Friday, June the eleventh, uh, twenty twenty-one. Uh, the board uh will have an opportunity to review those letters of submission uh and resumes that were submitted uh by that date.
And the staff have a recommendation at this time?
Uh, yes, we are, we are pretty much narrowing down them to a recommendation that the board will have uh Thursday.
Any questions or discussion on the side?
I, I guess I would just like to say that considering where you guys are concerned, that they have that, that they got racks because we need somebody that's gonna be very interested in getting our collections. I just wanted to figure this out.
Any additional questions on that? Item five, the board will not conduct an executive closed session to discuss the items posted on our agenda pursuant to the following provisions of the Texas Youth Meeting Act. As allowed by Texas Department of sections five five one point seven one, five five one point seven four, and five five one point one two nine. No voting will take place in a closed meeting. The action board wishes to take a resolved discussion in closed session. Will take place after we reconvene to an open session. It is now one oh seven P M. We will not reconvene in the open session before two, two o'clock.
Yeah, I think we should.
Sort of than that. All right, most like one thirty, yes. Thank you so much. Hey guys, if you would. It is two fifty, yeah. Waiting in the open session. Are there any requests for future agenda hires? Hearing done, I'll entertain a motion.
President, I will be adjourned.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Mr. Matoy. Do we have a second?
I second.
Thank you, Dr. Grumman, for our second. All those who favor, please give us a say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you for your time today. See you Thursday evening.